Now this meeting in order. Uh, the term is a quorum. Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Vasquez, Commissioner Nettleton, Commissioner Flotis, and myself, we have a quorum. Uh, God, please rise for pleasure of allegiance. Commissioner Vasquez, I am the pleasure of allegiance.
I plead to the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
What's your? Yeah. There is this comment, we have done. No, we didn't expect that. Item five, discussion possible action canvassing of the May 7th, 2022 special constitution amendment election returns and declaring result. Motion. I have a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotis. Jimmy, do you have anyone to put in?
Um, I just want to point out to the court that you do have a lot of results here. The court is only responsible for canvassing the first two state propositions on the ballot. The individual entities are responsible for canvassing their own election returns and they're having use today and tomorrow.
What percentage turnout did we have?
Uh.
No pressure.
No pressure.
You know I'm gonna ask that question, I ask it every single day.
I know, and for some reason, it's not on the report. I usually.
I know, but it's usually here, three, no, last.
Karen said nine point nine percent.
We had twenty-nine, we had two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two total turnout.
You said nine.
Out of twenty-eight thousand something voters. Um, I also wanted to just let the court know that the male, um, participant, participation was three hundred and fourteen, and we had two hundred and eighty returned that actually participated. Some of those were rejected again for the same reason with the envelope problem. We think we have, we may have a better solution. We're gonna find out from this, like, this batch that we just sent out. We're currently having a joint primary runoff. We're in the second day of early voting, and that is the state offices for the Democratic and the Republican Party. That's going on at the Civic Center right now through Friday. That's what the flyer is about, the one I handed you. Um, with this particular election, I have to send out that three hundred and fourteen again, so we're gonna see if what we did helps. Um, we did an actual picture of the envelope with arrows pointing exactly where.
Great.
And, and hopefully, because the first time we got rejected, we were able to fix thirty of the fifty-nine that were being rejected. This time, we got another thirty-something rejected, and they were totally different from the first group. So, we said, we gotta do something else besides calling them and trying to get them. Uh, so, we tried that, and we're hoping that works. If that doesn't work, I don't, we're gonna have to be more creative, I guess, about what we do.
In the, in the, oh, God.
No, well, we have one more to do, and it'll be the mayor's runoff election and District One position. So, if this doesn't work for this election that we're currently doing right now, we gotta try something in the, in the upcoming one in June. We've had plenty of times to practice since March to figure, to try to figure out different ways to try to get that part done.
And because of the votes and then we're canvassing and we're declaring the results, um, we talked also about, uh, first, we can, uh, for the first meeting, maybe.
Yes, or we had, we had, uh.
Of issues that we had.
We had a lot of issues come up, and some of that had to do with redistricting and the effect that redistricting had on some of the polling locations, voters, different situations. Um, I was able to prevent some of those issues. Uh, I have to get special permission from the Secretary of State to make those corrections, only because I do not have authority to change the voter registration records. That has to come from another department. So, in order for us to proceed for clear, obvious problems that we knew were clear bet, I had to get special permission from the Secretary of State, and they did give me that permission. So, those were handled.
Why didn't they fix them in the department that was supposed to be fixed?
They did, uh, I did reach out to the Secretary of State early on. They did assist them with some of the issues. However, some of them were not resolved by the time we had to start early voting. So, since we're required to use their information, I was a little concerned about whether or not I could make those changes. So, I reached out to them, and they have given me permission to fix those. And I decided only to change the voter that had showed up with the problem. I can't change the ones that didn't come and didn't.
Mr. Mon, you've gone one step further, not throw you under the bus. Uh, I've gone a couple steps further to identify individuals actually on several streets that when they came in, we knew that if they came in to vote, would be a problem, might have a problem.
Yes.
So, they were flagged.
Before. I flagged them before. I went through, once one person complained about a situation, then I looked into that particular person's area of where they live, and we were able to identify people that had not come to vote yet, okay? This happened on the first day of early voting, and I was able to correct those before they actually came in to vote.
What particular problem are we talking about?
Um, their precinct was identified incorrectly, and we had to, it, 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 when you identify incorrectly, you don't get all the people that you should be voting for on your ballot, because we follow the instructions of the voter registration office when trying to determine which ballot file is created for that particular voter. And when one person comes to complain, I was on site, I usually don't stay on site that long. I had to stay there, um, because it was gonna have to be something decided at spur of the moment. And so, when you don't identify the correct precinct for that person, they wind up not, uh, having the correct ballot and the people on the ballot.
So, what we're gonna do, uh, Mr. Mon, I've asked her to identify, to identify situations that, that we have, and then try to get past these elections, and probably the first Commissioner's Court in June, come back with that, that way we can ask questions and sort of go through, uh, some of the concerns that, that other people that have, that are running for office had issues with also.
Yes.
We've got a motion on the table, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotis, all those in favor. I, but it's, carrying five. So, wouldn't it make more sense if all of that was in one?
Sir.
Than having two separate offices, voter register in one place?
Well, I think that is, that is something we can discuss in June when we, when we have this meeting, because there will be other people involved in the meeting, so. And I, just one more thing, if, Ali.
Hey, hurry up, 'cause he keeps telling me.
Um, you need to remember that the city does not have the same precincts as the county and the school and the hospitals, and that is the big issue when we're dealing with these kind of problems.
But we're gonna fix that here, we're just.
They have to do their own, and evidently, it was not addressed.
Get it, too. Item six, discussion possible action on behalf of Democrat and Republican Parties for the use of county buildings for their primary runoff election scheduled for Tuesday, May 24th, 2022, for the following buildings, Old County Court at Law, 207B East Los Soya Street, 4H Barnes, Aubrey County Fairgrounds, and 206, uh, at Field Street. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Vasquez, all those in favor. Aye, anybody against, motion carries, five zero vote. Item seven, discussion possible action, estimated forty-five thousand dollar check from PAC for the total loss of Ram 2022, Ram fifteen hundred, two cap. And this one here, it says on there, approve the possibility of a buyback. That we don't have, but we do need to be able to accept the check. We make a motion to accept the check after the auditor certifies the revenue.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Vasquez, all those in favor.
We don't know the exact amount of the check, right? That's an estimate. That's put on there. So, we should probably wait till we actually get the check before.
Yeah, the only thing is, though, that when this money comes in, we have another item, item eight, on here. Uh, we're gonna have to go out and look for a truck, so I hate to, everybody already knows that we did, we had a hard time finding the first one. So, if we can sort of catch up a little bit, make up a little bit of room, uh, trying to go look, start looking for a truck. Does that make sense?
What can you just look for a truck now without having?
No, we can't.
Okay.
We are, but I want to make sure that the court understands that we're getting in about forty-four thousand dollars. We're gonna need some extra money to go look for a truck.
Okay.
I don't want to go look for a truck and then end up.
So, we don't know the exact amount, but we want to certify to which that's kind of an issue, isn't it?
Wait, so how do I, how do I make sure that we go look for a truck? Because I've got an item eight, and be able, we've got more or less about forty-four thousand dollars set aside. Why don't you go to item eight, and we'll just make a motion to authorize you to do it, and reverse, uh, what? Uh, on item seven, Commissioner Nettleton, Commissioner, uh, Vasquez, you'd already made a motion, you don't ever send that.
Is there a judge?
No, there isn't. Item eight, discussion possible action, approve a purchase of Ram 2022, Ram fifteen hundred, two cap, for an estimated amount of forty-nine thousand, with insurance money and the difference being paid on appropriate accounts, under which discretion the purchase is to be. This to replace the total lost vehicle as claimed by PAC. Make a motion to authorize purchase of the vehicle, and the money to come from whatever we get from insurers in the shortfall to come out of.
Contingency.
Contingency.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Vasquez, Matt, we okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Anybody against, motion carries, five zero vote, discussion. Do we need to go back to table, item seven? No, I want to, but it's still over. Item seven, governor motion, take it. Go through the table.
Second, yes.
Mr. Mon, you okay?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Vasquez, all those in favor. Aye, anybody against, motion carries, five zero vote. Item nine, discussion possible action to move the May 24th, Commissioner's Court meeting from the Old County Court at Law Building to the County Court at Law courtroom located on second floor, former.
Who, taken.
I have a motion, Commissioner Nettleton, second Commissioner Flotis, all those in favor. Aye, anybody against, motion carries, five zero vote. Item ten, discussion possible action regarding usage improvement, maintenance, and/or projects of Aubrey County Fairgrounds. Uh, first of all, the, this one here, we had, we, so, within our plans, uh, we've got the fairgrounds, we had planned, we had this sports complex planned, and then we've thrown around a couple other plans. Uh, we have, uh, we were, I'm gonna, what's our, okay. Insurance money for the fairgrounds was one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents. What do we have left? Sir? How much do we have left? Uh, one million, fourteen dollars, eight hundred, seventy-nine dollars and eighty-six cents, but out of that, there was not, the labor cost had not been taken out yet. The labor cost was seventy-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. That labor cost was taken out, I guess I just thought of, our, our general, uh, labor.
Correct, it was just taken out, I guess, as a part of the, of labor, because there wasn't.
So, we're gonna fall short on the parks budget? Uh, I'll tell you right now, we're right. If we don't reverse?
No, now it's the prior year.
Yeah.
Prior year closed down, wouldn't pass.
So, we don't hire them still? No. The four are not working right now. We love them all, or they just quit? They, uh.
Time expired.
They got to go up in the budget.
Well, the thing is, one of them got, one of them got, uh, one of them got rehired as part of the parks, parks crew, uh, and the rest of them quit, and a couple quit, one of them went to workers' comp, uh, workers' comp, and then now he's gone also, so.
Okay.
So, all three, uh, three out of the four, uh, are no longer with us, one out of the four went to parks. So, I guess we could stick with the one million, fourteen, fourteen thousand dollar number?
Yeah, the seventy-six, prior year.
One million, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. The, in every one of the plans that was ever thrown out, the, if you'll look. There's this one, this is the one that Carlos just made, and they made it up, the whole number, the next one. If you'll look at F, I don't know. If you'll look at the small, they had E, they're fighting shed rows, which are the oldest shed rows in the, at the fairgrounds, in every one of the plans, whether it be a sports complex, whether it be the, the, the plan from the fairgrounds committee, in every one of those plans, we were keeping those five shed rows. The five oldest shed rows, uh. There are the five oldest shed rows. Uh, those shed rows, we did not have insurance money for.
Yeah.
We did not get insurance money for them.
No.
We did not get insurance money for them, but we've already bought ten for them, because the plan was to fix them when we actually had a plan. So, I guess we can take off on everything else, but we need to sort of agree on which, on what we're keeping. Uh, so we can move forward with insurance. Like I say, those, those five, and every one of the plans, and anything that anybody's thrown out, we were going to keep. The. The E was gonna be tore down, and the storage room was gonna be. The, the E and the storage were gonna be tore down. And then where's the storage for the facility? The storage for the, for the facilities in K? Is that bigger? Well, they've already built the deal, and I think they can park all the trucks and everything in there. I know that in, in one of the other, in the plan from the fairgrounds committee, uh, C, uh, was in there for, uh, for building maintenance for storage, but the, last year, we sort of moved the storage deal to, to, to K, to half the K, and that's where that concrete sat.
There's also fourteen tents at the end of building C, for somebody that go animal issue.
So, if we could get to where we, we need to sort of, a little bit at a time, so if we, if we could get to where we're gonna keep the five shed rows, at least, at least we can do something, uh, first, that way we can come up with some dollar amount.
If you'll get the, the horse people taken care of, and that, that's, then it's public, that's your first public piece, that's your first corner, then that, then that, get them situated, and then you can start working towards whatever kind of the goal of what we're gonna do with the rest of, what you wanna do with the rest of the property. That, the horses, the first, that's the key part, and also, what barns y'all want for storage, so the things that y'all have jammed in everywhere, we, you know, get that cleaned up and out of the way, and then go from there.
Yeah. We agree. Like I say, the five shed rows, it looks like everybody agrees with the five shed.
We've got so well, agree on.
Yeah, we do.
Get that one down.
Yes. The five shed rows, uh, we had a cost of six hundred and, uh.
So, I have a quote for five hundred and sixty-three thousand, sixty-five, and extra roof for the grounds.
Okay, and that, that does not include any of the retro changes or anything that may need to be.
They're including a hundred seats per building. Anything over than that, it will be an additional nine.
Give me that number again.
Five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine, seventy-five cents.
And then this to repair the five stalls, remove the asbestos.
Take down the asbestos on the sixth building that has the asbestos, and then repair the five sheds, and repair the grandstand group.
And we already bought the material for that? We've already bought the ten only for the five shed rows. And that comes off of the five hundred and sixty thousand?
It's gonna be the top.
What's the timetable for that, Colonel?
They're saying sixty days, but I think it's gonna be more than that, because we need to ship the horses and everything.
Are we, are we gonna hire a company to do all this work? So, that quote comes from a company?
When did we get that quote?
That was on, uh, March eighteen, March eleventh this year.
And we're sure the quote's here?
And it was good for sixty days.
So, we may need to get a new quote.
We may need to get another.
The, we already have the ten, uh, Mary's already given us the, she, I asked her to pull, uh, the invoices from Royal, so we have those invoices that we could, uh, add up and send it to this guy. Uh, I did tell Carlos, though, that we would probably negotiate a little bit with him, because we bought that ten last year, so if they were to buy it today, it'd cost them more money. Uh, maybe try to, you know, get the difference between what we paid and what is costing now or time, because it's, that's already rolled into their quote. And then the, uh, that does not include the cost to replace the bleachers with aluminum bleachers on the grounds, but that's gonna be additional. We already bought the aluminum bleachers, so now we need to hire somebody to put them up. Yes. And we actually are going out for bid on that one. We had, uh, we had a couple of people that had come by, uh, hundred and fifty.
Hundred and seventeen?
Hundred and seventeen? Why don't you get the hundred? Hundred and seventeen, one, one, seven. Okay. And that cost only includes replacing the roof, not repairing doors in the front? Nothing. Structure, nothing? Nothing. Just removing the asbestos on six buildings, which includes E, and replacing. But why are we gonna remove it if we're tearing it down? Well, because if we're gonna tear down E, they have to remove the asbestos, we can't.
And we have an asbestos.
E doesn't have asbestos. He, uh, he has asbestos.
Does the storage building have asbestos? The storage building, K, where we're at right now? No, 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 the old storage, this one. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, let me go back. You're right, E does not have.
E does not have, the storage has it, but E does not.
The one that has it. Three times on there. We're tearing down E and the storage.
Yes, sir. No, I built E thirty years ago, and no, no asbestos.
I stand corrected, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We agree on that one, too. So, what are we waiting on to get it done? We need the approval from the court, because those are the ones that did not have insurance, so in, so we were gonna do the, the sports complex, we were, uh, A, B, and A, B, C, and D, we weren't gonna do anything with, we were gonna shift that money over to the five shed rows. But even, again, even in the plan for the, the, the fairgrounds plans, sports, whatever, uh, we still, we were keeping the five shed rows, we just need approval from the court to be able to start. Is that what about the repairs to, you know?
Sir?
What about the repairs to C, D, D, or we tearing them down? Well, we have to fix them if we're gonna keep. If we're gonna, yeah. If we're gonna keep them, we have to fix them. And, and, uh, the fairgrounds plans, we don't, we had a couple of them that were there for, uh, for quarantine.
That one, that one little, this one right here in the corner, was a thousand quarantine thing. This was a, this, basically, this was one of the like y'all's yards for equipment and storage, and they do building quarantine tent over here.
Which one is it?
That was the last time.
The which one?
Right here.
C, the last one? C? Is it this one, right?
Yes, this one, stay, and that one stay.
Okay.
And this would all go away.
Okay, B, and the one that does not have anything on it, would go away.
I just kind of wrote there, I think that time was discussed about possibly another arena for just kids activities in there.
But I mean, we could keep, if we did away with C and B, because we already have storage in, we'd have A, B, A, B, and then that other one, the left here, and if we were ever gonna build an arena that actually gave you more room down there, we've talked also where E's at, well, let me go back. We need to figure out what we're gonna do with C, B, A, B, C, uh, and then D, and this other little one over here. So, I guess that's a question right now.
Very, very, very close. So, if we did. Time we were out there with this doggone stuff, and we're out, we can just box this.
So, if we did away with C and B and kept A and D and that little one for now, that is up to y'all, but we do need.
Good. Why don't we, why don't we redo the, the roofs on, on these five stalls?
So, first, so we'll be having a place for these horses to move to, because they're gonna have to move them all out. Can we, and when we finish that, when we can make it, we can decide what we're gonna do. Do, does anybody do want to have a motion to fix the five shed rows, and then that's something to go off of? Make a motion to fix the five shed rows.
Fix the five first, and then we, and then.
Uh, Commissioner Nettleton. The others to move horses, you'll make with him. Do we need to go out for a new quote? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Make a motion to fix the five shed rows, to get a new quote, is that quote through the byboard? Get a new quote for those, and then to, uh, remove E, the storage shed, B, take them back. E and B? E, the storage shed, that storage building, yes, that storage, and then B.
What, what is that motion?
We're gonna fix the five shed rows, and then we'll remove E, remove the storage shed, and also B.
The stores.
Yeah. So, we'll fix these. The one that has the best, remove all. We're moving that one, and remove this one. This one, and these two will stick for now.
What I propose, we leave them all alone, we fix these, we'll have a place for these horses, because horses are in all of it, in all three of these.
We don't have to tear the other ones down until you get the other ones fit.
That, that's right.
Yeah, so, but with his motion, he took care of everything. He fixed these, tore down this, tore down that one, and tore down this one, but we're not gonna tear down this one or tear down this one until these horses have a place to go. That work.
Is that right? Is that good, Jimmy?
That's right. I like, that's the first, the first thing that's gonna happen with five shed rows, and then that allows you the space, but, but, because how many, so, how many tents do you have at the fairgrounds?
We have sixty-five renters, and I have, we have a hundred and eighty-four stalls that are rented.
Hundred and eighty-four stalls?
Hundred and eighty-four stalls that are rented. I don't know, I didn't bring the paper that shows me how many horses, how many.
I mean.
About a hundred and eighty-four stalls.
They're, they're being paid for, okay, yeah.
I didn't say they're being paid for.
Well, they're.
Well, no, before Martin says, wait a minute. No, they're being paid.
Each of these five buildings, there's, is there forty or forty-two stalls in those buildings?
Like forty-two.
Forty-two.
But a lot of them shed row, or a lot of them are tack rooms and stuff, so, I didn't know.
That many horses can fit in?
Some of them, I mean, to me, they're small. I didn't know if there'd be a way to, you know.
Open up, open up some of that area, which takes two stalls, make one stall, give them animal more room, but.
And some of them, that, that, they're, they're gonna need a lot of work.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Some of them, where they put up the wall, some of the walls have been knocked down, so they pay for two, the actual, the actual walls, there's already started to be knocked down, and it was completely knocked down, uh, and then a bunch of them do have, uh, two stalls.
There's been a lot of remodeling that we're not.
There has, uh, yeah, yeah. The, and I couldn't give you a count on K, how many stalls are there also that were already fixed and remodeled, where I've worked, and those. There's additional stuff that we need to do to the stalls, what we're at this. Yeah, so it's not just the five or seven hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be an additional amount to repair all the interior. And what we could do is go buy.
They're in bad shape, there's no doubt about it. I mean, I went by them today and.
Tear them down and start over.
That, not, you know, it might be a better option.
Might be cheaper.
It would, exactly, you know, sometimes a bulldozer's the best answer.
Yeah.
Clean slate, I mean, that's, we still have to deal with the asbestos coming off.
Commissioner, no, no, I mean, Commissioner, that's how come we're here, but we've been going back and forth, back and forth, if we can get a, a clear answer from the court as to, but let me, let me. I'd like for us to go on and, and. Think I'm gonna change my motion, to get a quote, completely remove and rebuild the stalls, which are, are these J, I, H, G, and F? Yeah, the five, the five that are there?
I'll second that motion.
H, and.
A quote to rebuild, could we do, do we want to, do we wanna go with block? Uh, or what is it, do we wanna go with?
What, you know.
There, there are stall kits now, that they, somebody that puts a stall, like, they, they do it all the time, they can pitch kits, come in and do stall kits, like the panels or whatever, I think in mine, you have a lot of options.
Okay.
If you don't wanna go to their lot.
That's what Abilene has in their barns, isn't it? In fact, Abilene, they have western heritage today.
They put up the roof, and then they come in and, and, and put the panels, right?
Yeah, well, they're pretty bad.
Basically, they pull barns and kind of put their panels in the middle to divide everything with gates and that, or...
About building them like New Mexico, adobe brick. Cooler area for the animal and everything.
That's...
Be different.
Let's get a, let's get a quote and see if we can afford it.
That's, that's what I mean, you know, if y'all go...
Those are good options to me.
If y'all go look at something after them, it gives y'all a better idea, because that's, the committee, we did, we did first two or three meetings there at Fairgrounds, and we went and walked the buildings and looked at them, you know, with the, with the architects. So, I mean, he can, let's get the gate and we're gonna see what's...
Stall size, stall size, that way we have an idea of what I'm look, what we're looking at and starting with prices.
Fifteen by fifteen?
Okay, yeah. Fifteen by fifteen.
And the stall that has, it might be, I'm just gonna get over, take them in, put the five, so maybe it's thirteen by thirteen.
Well, either way, we'll, we'll, we'll look at, get a price for the, to just remove the asbestos, uh, on, on all six buildings, and then, uh, we'll look at a price for...
Yeah, sometimes, boy, it makes it better, that, you know, comes right out.
Yeah. F, G, H, I, and J.
So, James, you're asking, sir, roof removal and total removal of the stalls?
Well, we'll just get them to remove the asbestos, and then we can go out for bid to remove all six of them.
Well, I mean, the, the, you're not gonna remove part of them the other, the price is gonna be to remove it and build a new stall, period.
It's building nine thousand thirty.
You don't, I mean, you can't remove the asbestos now, and then you don't have to worry for the horses.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big puzzle, because you're gonna be, you're gonna, it's gonna be a lot of moving parts, trying to move animals around, keep them out of the way.
And then what we could do is probably figure out where we can move the rest of them into C and B and everything, uh, and then if we need more room, keep some of the old ones, and then we are, then we'll know which ones we can tear down.
The tins are gonna be flexible, if they want it better, they're gonna have to be willing to move around some.
That's a, that's a scheduling problem, that's not...
Okay.
Yeah. Put your motion, James.
That was, my motion is to go out for bids to completely remove and replace with new stalls F, G, H, I, J, to get a bid.
Have a second? Second? Have a motion?
I had already said it, but it's okay, no, uh, Martin?
Got it?
No, no. I have two motion and two seconds.
I have six.
He rescinded the first motion. He rescinded the first motion.
Yeah, yeah, so we just started over. And the second did too, so.
Yes.
I have a motion, Commissioner Middleton, second, Commissioner Wardlaw, as long as Commissioner Flood discusses it, man.
No, I don't get mad. Get evil.
Get evil.
No, no, I'm fine.
All those in favor, uh, I, if anybody against, motion carries by zero vote.
And can we discuss the future of the fairgrounds? Because I believe that, I mean, we're gonna spend a lot of money to replace all these stalls, and I'm fine, that's fine, it is one of them. But we need, in my opinion, that fairgrounds should be used for events and youth, period. Uh, in this plan of the fairgrounds committee, we took out basically a little over half the track, almost half the track, so we're gonna remove it completely, not have a track.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have a straightaway in the back there, see, on your quarter mile stretch, you can run, you can run four horses on it, you can do match races, you can have, uh, Abilene last weekend, was their western heritage, they had, and they had people come in, fill up with their trailers, and they, they made a makeshift track, I mean, I didn't have a track, but they made one for this deal. People come in with western saddles, and they just match race each other, and it was a whole afternoon, the people just, you know, like, I can't run your horse, and off we go, you know, type stuff. There's different things, there's, there's different things that can happen with this, with the track.
The good thing about what we're planning to do, and, and give a new look to the fairgrounds, starting with, uh, four stables, it'll be a one-time expense.
Yes, yes.
And that's it. It's not like we're gonna redo them every year, every five years, every ten years. So whatever we build, we're gonna build it where it's gonna last fifty, a hundred years.
Build it and maintain it, it'll always be there.
If it's maintained.
That's, that's been the problem with track.
But if it's not, if it's, if it's any condition it's in now, and not maintained, and more than it is, and the people are not required to keep their stalls clean and stuff, we're gonna find ourselves back in the same problem.
Same problem.
And so we still have to resolve the, the maintenance and requiring people to do their part, which is in just accounting, the people that rent horse stalls out there have to do their part, which people clean, and you go out there and their horses are just deep in the...
Shell Tony's ass about this, huh?
We're not enforcing that they keep them clean to some level, and we're fixing to spend, this would be well over a million dollars by the time we're done. Um, there has to be a plan in place on how we're gonna require them to do their part, and we're gonna do our part.
Post it and enforce it? You know, that's, that's easier said than done.
We have a set of rules, we ain't enforcing to this point, there's drinking, there's partying, there's doing all kinds of stuff, but I mean, that's, that's a whole nother deal. What I would like to see out there, if we're gonna do this, well, I do not agree people should run businesses out of there, that's fine, we don't have a youth facility where our youth can be separated from everybody else.
I heard, yes, remember you said that last time? And we've got...
They need to be separated, where the youth can do their thing, while everybody else goes and does their thing.
Hmm, there's space for that.
Where?
Right there, where we're talking about those, uh...
These facilities over here, that we talked about last time.
Back one in front of you.
Because originally, y'all were gonna put a quarantine pin.
They, you can still have quarantine pin here, and y'all can still have a storage yard here, but this could, once, B, C, and B, you take those out, there's room for...
Well, you need stalls, we need stalls. I, I'm talking about a youth facility where they keep their horses there, and they have arenas, away from all of this other mess as well.
Oh, yeah, because they, they, they only sell...
It'll be, C stays, B comes out, this comes out, this one stays, and then there's arenas in here just for youth, and it's fenced off where only youth can use it.
So I have a room right here for A arena?
And we had a, we had a plan, well, it's gonna be at least three arenas, right, Phil?
What would be?
There are three arenas.
What would be, what would be the need for three arenas, I mean, I just, I just...
Well, you have different things going on, you have different groups practicing for different things.
Okay.
If you only have one arena, you ain't got enough, same problem we have in baseball and softball and everything else, you don't have a arena, or enough fields. You have one group practicing roping, team roping, you have another group practicing the, uh, what is it? Scaramusas, you have another group practicing barrels, you need enough room for them to accomplish that task. If you have one arena, everybody's gonna be fighting for it, there's not enough room.
As in the 4H have all that?
Yeah.
The 4H have?
No, no, I'm talking about youth independent...
Well, I understand, I said, but they're right there next door, maybe we can do something there.
And that arena is just in there.
I mean, I think that you need, uh, enough arenas for everybody to be able to use and practice what they're practicing. And I, I, I think it's a great idea, I mean, we just need to find the right place for it.
I'm, I'm following, but it's...
I think there's an opportunity to make some money out there. If we have some stalls built where we can utilize the big track arena, the current arena there, I realize the 4H arena won't be able to be used, but if, if in the, if in the future we ever did an event center sort of in the center of that track, you can book a lot of ropings, I mean, they get eight thousand runs a day in these team ropings, and the reason it would be so well received is because they start you in one arena roping, and you move to the second arena roping, and, um, if we had an ability to house these people, they come into our community, they buy gas, they eat, they get a hotel room, they stay at the track, they rope, I mean, I've seen Sweetwater grow its facility to like, three college sims, all because they have the Texas High School venue and the West Texas venue, I mean, we need to look for a revenue driver out there, I think.
I'm giving my opinion.
No, no, I mean, I've, I've read the note, and I'm, you know, actually, I would love a list back from y'all, sent to the committee, is what concerns and issues things are, and then I'll get the committee back together, and we, we can sit down and discuss and see what's feasible, you know, if, if there's areas there, but we need some direction back from y'all, I mean, we've given you a direction, we thought this is a good spot to start. If you'll give us a list back, and then we get, I'll get the committee back together, and we'll try and, we'll try and get, we need to do something, but I know that.
And on the infield, y'all have?
Currently, those are soccer, they, they can go soccer or, uh, football.
We had this argument already, that youth sports around horses doesn't work, so I thought we took all that out.
No, it does work, depending on what kind it is. You can have, you, we're gonna get the high horse people are gonna be in the back corner of the track, that's, that's the whole goal, is they have their spot, and they won't need, they won't be in the middle part, they won't use the track, they can still use the track while kids are playing soccer. But I mean, you can, this whole facility can be used, every bit of it, in a single day without anybody stepping on those toes, you can have soccer games in the morning, pee-weed football, you can have a bull riding at night, and some going on in your event center, everybody's got their spot, it's like the parking spaces, you can utilize the whole thing, all day long, and nobody's getting in each other's way. The, the horse people can do their thing in their back corner, it's, it's multifunctional, and it's, it's worth, this plan to me works because, like I said, soccer and pee-weed football during the day, that's not getting in the way of Bobby's bull riding, anybody's rodeo or whatever.
What was the difference between that plan and the other plan, where we had both in the same place? That the other one didn't work?
Which, uh, which plan is that?
The one with the sports complex, because it had all the same things you're talking about here.
Baseball doesn't work to get around horses, in my opinion.
So the problem is baseball, not necessarily soccer.
Well, you know, another thing, I think it'd be wise for, for a sports complex, my, this, my personal opinion, just Jimmy Murdock talking to y'all, let's get an inventory of what we have in this town, of baseball fields, soccer fields, football fields, gymnasiums, there's basketball, there's a need there, we have one stadium for basketball, which is the boys, is the, children's, or the boys and girls, you know, you know what I'm talking about, I mean, that's all we have. I mean, I went and talked to the guy that referees, he works for me, and he goes all over, all over the state refereeing basketball games, volleyball games, uh, soccer, and he goes to a lot of these nice facilities, you know, first thing he said was, we need more basketball courts in town, like, I, you know.
So we need...
And that's, and I don't, I mean, I don't know, so that's why I went and talked to him, this, you know, I've got one of my guys, his son plays pee-weed football very competitively, and they go to Acuna, and I'm like, he showed me pictures of what they have in Acuna, and I'm like, you gotta kiss me, you know?
No, I agree with you, I mean, I travel all over the state doing travel, and playing some of the nicest facilities, we play in Houston, and there's literally a hundred courts in that indoor room, going all day, three days. I always thought the purpose of what we were doing was an event center that would host and be able to handle all those different types of events.
The, the third phase was...
Be it indoor basketball, be it indoor volleyball, be it indoor, whatever.
The, the third phase was, it concludes the event center, and this was a two thousand nineteen pricing, and if you want, all three phases, which, uh...
All three phases, thirty million.
Would be, oh, what was the final number on that? Of course, the cost, the cost estimates on this are not even close in today's environment.
Well, this one has a phase one, phase two, the adventure.
Phase three is as much as phase one and two.
Yeah, so it was sixty something million dollars.
Sixty something million dollars if you did all three in one, in one bag, you know?
Yeah, the first one's...
Exactly. Which is probably closer to over eighty now.
Yeah, it would be, probably twenty plus eighty now.
You know, I mean, the metal for the roof y'all bought, you probably saved a dollar to a dollar fifty a foot by buying it last year, not this year.
You know, we have the same problem with, uh, with all of us, be it a horse event, be it youth sports, be it whatever, all of our children travel all over the United States to play, because they can't play in Denver, Texas. The clean softball has to travel out of town to do their tournaments, because we can't host tournaments if we ain't got enough fields. Uh, the rounds, baseball, same issue. Um, volleyball, we're able to host some tournaments here, but not that big, but we don't have the facilities that it takes to be able to do that. So, I mean, you have a, whatever this price is, fifty, sixty, seventy million, you have the sports complex, and you need another forty, fifty million, um, I see this community can afford one project, not multiple projects, we don't have the revenue, this, this community doesn't have the ability to fund multiple projects, and we have another twenty million and it's a forty million dollar project. When we, when we looked at the sports complex, it was a twenty million dollars, that included a gymnasium that housed, uh, two basketball and four volleyball courts, um, and all that, so, I mean, I guess the question the court has to decide is, is what do we want the community to spend their money on? And I agree that there is a potential to bring in revenue here, but there's also a potential to bring in revenue on the other side too, so...
Should this all be on the county, does the city, or does the city have any responsibility, or should they be doing anything for the...
Well, what we should be doing is a joint project, that's what we should, the city and county is going to do a joint project. We would have to get everybody to get there, um, but if we're going to keep this as, as it is, I still wanna see a youth area, we have the youth mixed with the adults, and they're training horses, and they're trying to practice theirs, and I think it needs to be separated, that's my first thought. Uh, they need a place to go, where they don't have to worry about all of the other issues that are going on.
Okay, okay.
Um, wherever it's built, if we're going to keep this that way, there needs to be a youth facility, we have a lot of children that are practicing for different types of stuff that they're doing all over.
Different, yeah, different.
And, and they don't need to be sharing with a guy that's trying to break a horse or do something else, it doesn't work, uh, but that's just my first thought.
Well, you can even, you know, the, the five shed rows there, you can even, you know, separate them with using those shed rows by designating two of them for youth, and three of them for your trainers and your, your people that work horses, you know, and if they're running a business out there, hey, guess what, you know, you're paying a commercial rate to rent your stall. If you're, if, if you have a horse out there, well, your rate's cheaper than you that train, breaking and training horses, that's just the way it is.
And I'm glad you brought that up. What would you consider if we do all this, a reasonable rate?
I'd take that back to the committee and talk to them, but I mean, I, my opinion, we raised, I think y'all were charging twenty-five dollars a stall, and we're not thirty, in my opinion, the time would take it fifty, because you're not, you got a track he can use, you got an arena you can use, and you're keeping your horse out there for thirty dollars a month, that's its bargain. You know, we're talking about how much we spent, you spend on horses versus, the kids with horses versus kids playing soccer, well, that brings your cost for, your cost down because you're bringing in more revenue. But, you know, when you fix something up, you charge more for it.
So fifty dollars?
Cat like to run, it's, you know...
And then what would be the charge for the use of the, a reasonable charge for the use of the main arena with the stands and all that?
We'd have to go back and revisit that, I mean, we, that first thing, we check and see what we're doing, check with some other counties and see what they charge for their facility, just gotta get a guideline.
So if we raise from thirty to fifty, we generate nine hundred, uh, twenty dollars more a month?
A month? That'll make a difference.
Thirty-six hundred?
A month?
Thirty-seven hundred? 3,700 a month.
Yeah, yeah. But if they're gonna pay more, they're gonna expect something, so, yeah.
Facility in health, like a 4 million dollar bond, the annual payment is 1,214,120 dollars, which if you did it, was a 4.56 tax to cover that cost. If you did it on a revenue bond, you'd have to generate a whole lot more money than that at this fairgrounds to cover that, which equates to about a $44.99 tax on a $100,000 house, on a 20 million dollar bond. And if you get to a 70 million dollars, we're talking about 15, almost 16 cents, which equates to $157.40 for every $100,000 house, which being going to your $300,000 house, you're talking about $300,000 a year, increasing taxes. I believe that if you're willing to do that, you can't put it all on the back of the taxpayers. This thing has to generate revenue, and $88,000 that we generated today doesn't even scratch the surface of what we spend. It has, as Clay said, it has to generate revenue somewhere.
What do we collect the hotel, motel to?
Uh, we budgeted this year outside of the county, I think it was right around 90,000.
And inside?
Inside.
Inside should be around 200,000.
290,000.
There is that venue tax, that if you do, like you talked about, going into an agreement with the city, you guys are able to pass that venue tax, would be an additional 200,000. I'm sorry, additional 2%, which would equate to about 200,000, so.
That, we have, that one we have to partner with.
You would have to partner with, but.
Well, you'd have to hold an election, a venue election. You'd have to hold an election.
You'd have to hold an election to get on the ballot, but then you'd also have to create the, the committee or the board, and we know the key on it, I think, on that.
Did we just hire a private firm to manage it?
We did, and talked to him on Saturday, I told him that we were having this meeting today, and if he would wait till we come up with what, more or less, an idea of what we were doing right now, and then probably come back, the first meeting in June, and look at numbers, what it would cost to borrow, more or less, what it'd cost to borrow money. He said, how much? I said, probably anywhere between 20 and 50 million dollars. Give us prices on both of those, and see if it would be better also, because there had been a discussion about using maybe some of the ARPA money that we had, and then the 2.7 odd million that we had out of the 4.3 that we'd already borrowed, to give us some advice on that, as to if it'd be better to go borrow money, or whether it'd be better to use that money. So he was gonna do some scenarios, and then send it to, send it to. I think the situation's been somewhere between 20 to 50 million dollars for this. What are we gonna do for the other unit? What do they give to you? Uh, if we have thousands and thousands of children in place, some of that 20 to 50 million dollars, the 20 to 50 million dollars that I told them to get his prices on. This project wasn't a sports complex, my deal wasn't on this. This project, he took 40 to 50 million. 20 to 50 million or, and sports venue is gonna be somewhere between 20 to 40 million. I wasn't really too concerned about the fairgrounds, in my opinion. I figured we'd do the shed rows. If you wanted to do something for youths, I disagree with that out there for four or five people that are doing it, but if that's what it takes to get the rest of it done, then let's go do it. An event center, something like that, there was plans in the sports complex deal for a 60,000 square foot in area, 60,000 square foot. They are going to petition this court to put something on the ballot in November. They're already gathering signatures for that, so I think whatever we do here, long range, whether it be an event center or whatever we're planning, I think come November, all that's gonna go away. I think the voters are gonna tell us what they want in November. You know, they're coming to us to put it on, put it on the ballot. So, I mean, I mean, my biggest concern is we need to move forward with something. The shed rows to get prices, the horses, we, we need to move forward with that. We have the, we have the million dollars to move that, we need to move forward with something. Whether it just be the five shed rows, whether it be. Well, I mean, we have a, we have a motion to get a price to rebuild all five shed rows. So I think we need to get that number, and then we can.
Dad, you gotta take care of the horses, and then we'll see which way the wind blows from there, but the horses need to be dealt with first, period.
No, and, and again, we already have that money today. Again, it's, it's gonna cost more than that, but the whole thing is that we have to move, we have to go do something. We've been sitting on this money now almost two years. Did we ever get estimates of what other places charged, how horses is, you know?
We can call it, I mean, we got, we got bogged down with COVID, and we just kind of put her playing on the back burner, because we. I mean, all you gotta do is like, poke on.
Really is, really. I mean, we've been from, for 10 years, you're right, you're from Delray, and Victoria, British Columbia, and St. Louis Fairgrounds throughout the United States. And in Berlin, Utah, is the only place I have a stall I use to train and track. But that, you know, that's the reason they would let trainers come in and work their horses on the track, a couple of trainers house there. But most places, you know, the stalls are set up for the use of the arenas and the facilities. So when you rent a facility for your event, be it barrel racing, or whatever, they go to the stalls for like $25.
How much?
$45 for that.
$45 for you to rent a stall, a night?
25.
25? No, no, a night, a night.
No, Mr. Bul, there are some places out there, this was about a year ago, that I looked into, some of these places north of San Antonio were doing about $90 a month. And that's what you're asking about, keeping a horse.
Well, those are private facilities, they're, they're anywhere from 90 to 350, depending on what the facility is. My, my, my issue is not the use of having horses out there, and the use of our youth having a place to keep their horse. My issue is people running a business out of there at 30 or 50 dollars a month. That is my biggest problem.
I said, you charge them a commercial rate.
Real quick, if we start off with the five shed rows, we fix the five shed rows, we go to do an event center, or whatever we go to do, we still have the five shed rows. That would be worth, I mean, if you, if we go to build the, an event center, we're gonna have roping or have whatever, and we don't want it, people start leaving the five, the five shed rows because they don't want to pay more money. We're gonna have a nice facility for the five shed rows, and they're gonna be nice. I agree with them, we can have them, totally agree. We'd still have them if we went to build an event center, or you do ropings or whatever, we still have a place for them to put their horse when they come in.
And the stall very largely is important to the client.
Yes, yeah. I totally agree with us, remind, I'm not, my, my issue has to do with other things, and, but, I mean, you know, let's get the price to be there.
I think we just need to deal with what we got on the table right now.
So we got a motion yet?
Motion in a second.
We got short-term goals, long-term visions, and we got step one, and we got step 25, and, and I get it. And in sports complex, I mean, for me, the first thing to do is true sports complex, you gotta find the dirt to put the sports complex on. You know, and then, these are all, none of this is gonna happen, no, it's all gonna take money, a lot of money. You know, people, there's gonna have to find creative ways to find money, you'll need the county, the city, everybody, you know, cooperating, which is, you know, that's the task.
At one point said, when we're looking at the other projects, whatever, you know, they, they might be willing to, to join in. You know, like I said, and the amount of money that they're willing to give us, I'd rather you keep your money, give me water, you know.
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't you give me water for the whole facility, whether it be for horses or, or sports, whatever? You know, because I think, you know, what you're wanting to give me is gonna be nice now, but you're gonna make it back up in, in water usage and, you know, over the life of this deal. So, I mean, there is ways to partner with the city, I, I think, starting the five shed rows, that's, that's good applies, let's, let's move forward with that. The track, if we could agree and say, look, part of this track's gonna go anyway, with whoever's plan.
And that can be done with.
Make that happen now too.
That can be done with county and police, I mean, you don't.
On the other hand, if we take the track out, I mean, I don't.
There, I mean, there hadn't been a, the full use.
Oh, there's never gonna be a, a horse racing there, but I mean, you know, the purpose was just to keep it.
We kept the integrity of the track, but then we opened up that infill area by taking out part of the track, and that gives, that opens that whole area up to do whatever improvements are. You know, be it a soccer field, or whatever, I mean, that, that, by killing that track, that back turn. I mean, somebody posted on Facebook, though, there was a horse ran here in the 40, killed a quarter mile, quarter mile of, of track race for, wait, 22 seconds.
I know, I'm looking at you, because I know your opinion.
Y'all, I mean, y'all still wanna go out there and look at it?
I've already seen it all. I don't need to drive out there, I need to come up with a plan.
Fix the five bars, that's the plan, then we'll, then we'll go from there, I mean.
That's one of what we have, at least everybody's been here, we're all, we took a vote this time, we're not going back on this one, and I think we're gonna, we'll move forward on the five.
I mean, like I said, that gives you a clean slate and the rest of it, it's all work in progress, and there's nobody, there's no way to give everybody what's going on with it. We're all, everybody's gonna have to go and make some concessions, and just do the best we can, for once you got, you know, keep moving forward.
Like what Jimmy said, one step at a time.
Baby step.
And, and I agree with that, and I agree that they do something with the stalls that are there. What are we gonna do about making sure the rules are enforced in the presence?
Commissioner Wardlaw.
I met with, I met with all the renters, and I had like 50 some odd renters from that under Grand Stand, and they've all signed a contract, anybody breaks any rule on the contract, they're out. They all agreed, and since we had this meeting, there's been no, no violations, no problems, no, uh.
They signed a contract?
They all signed the contract with the rules.
Don't we do this contract?
It's the one we did two years ago with the county attorney at the time, because we deal with three pages or six pages when all your votes.
The lease agreement or a contract? You said contract, you're talking about the lease agreement.
Well, a lease agreement is a contract.
It's the rental agreement for the stalls.
The original lease agreement.
Correct. They all signed it, they all agreed, and I told them, anybody, anybody breaks any rule for any reason, they're out.
And what are we gonna do about enforcing that they keep their stalls clean or what?
That's a rule.
In the contract or?
That's, that's a rule, that's in the contract, I believe that's all addressed in this contract.
It already is, but those contracts have been in place for a while, and they're still not cleared.
Well, we just had this meeting, we had this meeting like two weeks ago, and I told them, no, no second chances. You break the rule, you're out.
Could you, Commissioner Wardlaw, maybe when, when they do the rounds, like to check if some of these horses are there, you ask them to look inside the stalls, and then he gives you a list of how various stalls are located? Correct. Network? Correct.
Yes. We have a, we've got a good manager out there, and, and a good secretary, and.
Mr. Murdock, are you okay with what we're doing, what we, what we're trying to accomplish right now is to move forward with the five shed rows going on?
Yes, and I think that's, so, you gotta get, you get your horse people taken care of, and then that opens a door for wherever this goes. But that, that's the first piece of the puzzle.
I'm gonna go on to item 11, if you'd like. Second, I'm motion, Commissioner Middleton, and Commissioner Flores, all those, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody against? I will need to get the session over. Close session consultation pursuant to Joint Texas Government Code 8551.07122, 39th Circuit, 2551.07121. Court today, contemplated litigation, see 551.072 regarding the purchase exchange lease and value of real property and possible action and open session thereafter. B, 551.073 regarding the negotiated contract lease and or value of real property and or possible action and open session thereafter.
I don't want to be in the debate.
No, I need to. Uh, court, now coming back in at sessions, no axonation and executive session. Commissioner's comments, item 13, none. County judge's comments, item 14, none. Item 15, the county attorney, no action.